Gerald, you ready? I'd like to call this meeting of the City Council Mayor December 3rd, 2018, to order. If you would please stand for the pledge allegiance led by me and remain standing for the invocation land of Mr. Triplet. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come to you tonight. Father, we thank you for all your many blessings that you have given us. Father, we thank you for your blessings on our community. And God, we just ask you to continue to pour out your blessings on our community. And Father, we just ask you to be with our mayor and city council tonight as they conduct the business of the city. Father, we ask you to give them wisdom, guidance, and direction. Father, we pray that everything that's said and done would be acceptable and pleasing in your sight. Father, we thank you for this Christmas season that's approaching. And Father, we just pray that you would give us a fresh awareness for you, a fresh love for you, and a fresh love for each other. Father, we ask these things in your name. Amen. Brings us down to number four, citizens' comment. Does anybody got anything they'd like to bring in front of the council? Please come forward, state your name, address. Please hold your comments to about three minutes if you can.
So, my name's Amy Hicks and our address is 116 Spring Street. And I'm here tonight just to thank the council for the speed humps on Spring Street. I'd like to recognize Councilman Jim Waters, Rory, and Tim Grizzard, and also Tommy Holland for all their help in getting those implemented. We've noticed that traffic has slowed exponentially and I think it will really help the community and keep kids safe. Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Anybody else? Seeing no one, we'll move ahead. Item number five, minutes. November 5th, 2018 meeting, need a motion to approve. Everybody had a chance to read them?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion, have a second. Have a second. All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Item number six, mayor and council announcements. Anybody got anything they'd like to say?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. If I may, I would like to commend the staff, not only the staff but the citizens and different corporations and companies of our city who participated in the parade. Normally, I'm in the parade, but I've made the decision not, this time not to. But I was able to watch the parade and I haven't seen one since probably 1999. And that parade was top-notch, beautiful from start to finish, and I can't say enough good things about the parade. Also, I would like to praise Joel Richards today and his crew for the construction of two more food pantries that will go in parts of the city where we don't have one. So, I really appreciate him working with a non, this particular nonprofit, and also with the church in installing those two. And I would like to thank the city staff for their hard work, from the little teeny tiny things that we work on from day to day to the great big things that we work on. Thank you for addressing the issues of our citizens in a prompt and professional manner. And I also would like to wish everyone in the city a happy holiday and I wish you many, many more, and a happy 2019. And I'm certainly glad to say that I work with a very classy group of men up here on the council, and I applaud them and I'm so glad and I look forward to working with them for another year.
I just think if I don't have the opportunity to see city staff again, I just wish y'all Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. Thank you for all your work you did this year, and also to all the residents of Carrollton. Happy New Year and Merry Christmas.
I'd just like to say thank you to our city staff. I know with the winter months coming up, I know it's a lot more difficult for our first responders being outside, Mike Green, y'all's crew, and everybody going out repairing and doing things of that nature. I know last year you guys really took care of the city and I very much appreciate it. So, I just want to say best of luck. I hope you guys got nice new coats for the cold weather coming up. But Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.
Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Yes, sir. I'd like to shout out to our Parks and Rec Department. They always do a great job. Our 11- and 12-year-old football team won the Georgia Recreation and Parks Association North Georgia Championship. And they're going to advance this Saturday to, I think, Peter, you're in the room? Is it Camden County they're playing next Saturday?
In Calhoun.
In Calhoun? We need to get that down here in Carrollton, don't we? But congratulations to our 11- and 12-year-old boys, this is the first time this has happened in a good, long time. How long ago, Peter? Probably since Jim Waters played. It's been a long time. So, congratulations to these young men. We'll get a chance to honor them next meeting, I hope, and pat them on the head. Like, they've come a long ways. And here again back to city staff, Merry Christmas, all the citizens of Carrollton. If you need something, keep calling.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This time of year, I could spend hours bragging on all the city staff. Again, all the different departments do a great job. It's an honor to be a part of this organization. I'm going to pick out one to brag on. This is the wrong city to commit a crime, and it is the wrong city. If you commit a crime, don't drive through Carrollton to try to get away. There was a bank robbery in Alabama a few weeks ago when Joel and his crowd and the county sheriff's department and the Georgia State Patrol caught them, and I just think that says a lot for the job they do. Excellent department, excellent fire department, excellent public works department, excellent water system, excellent development, and just all the nice things in the area. Again, the Christmas parade was excellent. Erica, me and that herself, because Andi was out with her, having her first child, and but Andi did the work building up to it and their staff, and so I could go on and on. But it's a, it's a pleasure to be a part of this city and it's in great shape, and I appreciate the support of all you gentlemen. Y'all do a great job. Thank you, and Merry Christmas to everybody. The Christmas party for the mayor and council and appointed boards is this Thursday at the Cultural Arts Center from 5:30 to 8:00. And then, also, I think shot with a cop was today, wouldn't it? Wouldn't it, Joel? Either that or there was a lot of crime going on, because I heard sirens all over the place. So, thank you for that. Merry Christmas to everybody.
That brings us down to number eight, approval agenda items for consideration. Can I get a motion? We'll...
So moved.
Have a motion, have a second. Have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Gerald?
Oh, yes, sir.
You're on the front line.
All right. Well, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, it's been brought to my attention, really, for a long, long time now that we have an outstanding citizen who, I'm so glad that you guys are in agreement that we should honor tonight. And Jim is a co-sponsor of this, and when I called him, he immediately responded. And it's Ms. Nellie Donaway Duke. Ms. Nellie, could you please raise your hand? I call her Nellie with the jelly, because she makes good jelly. She really does. This is a key to the city of Carrollton, given on December 3rd, 2018, presented to Nellie Donaway Duke. Like a superstar, you are. Whereas Nellie Duke is a very distinguished and honorable woman with her work in improving the lives of women and families in Georgia and throughout the world. And whereas Nellie Duke has received numerous honors throughout her lifetime, including the TIAW, I don't know how to say that word. T-I-A-W? Oh, it's an acronym. The T-I-A-W. T-I-A-W. We'll just say that. World of Difference Award from the International Alliance of Women. The 2015 Living Legacy Award from the University of West Georgia, Center for Diversity and Inclusion. And in May 2018, she received an honorary doctor degree from the University of West Georgia. Wow. And whereas Nellie Duke, Dr. Nellie Duke, is to be praised for her successful efforts in influencing peace and diversity in our community, state, and nation. Now therefore, by the authority vested in the city council and the mayor of Carrollton, we do hereby present this key to the city, to Nellie Donaway Duke. This key is not a key to just any lot, but it is the true key to the hearts of all of our citizens on this fair day of this fair city. Signed and presented this third day of December 2018. Mayor Walt Hollinsworth, Mayor Pro-Tim Gerald Byrd, Councilmember Jim Waters, Councilmember Matt Lang, Councilmember Rory Wojcik. Let's hear it for Ms. Duke. Mr. Mayor and members of the council, a couple, I guess it's been over a month now ago, we lost a very, very hard-working citizen by the name of Michelle Lewis. And I'm not sure if you knew her, but if you didn't know her, you should know her. And on a side note, I would like to say that we have a kitchen over in West Carrollton that's only about two years old at Legends. Rory, you've been there? And I was there this summer attending to the community garden and I saw Michelle leaving with an armload of pots and pans, and I asked, "What are you doing?" She said, "I'm teaching people how to cook healthy, who traditionally cook unhealthy. I'm showing them options." So, I thought, what a neat way to honor Michelle, is if we named that new kitchen in her honor over at Legends. Well, it's a beautiful kitchen and a beautiful, almost barn-like structure, very rustic, and Peter and his staff has done a great job of maintaining it, and I think it would serve us well to name that in her honor. But tonight, we have a proclamation here, posthumously, that's the word isn't. Office of the Mayor of the City of Carrollton, resolution, December 3rd, 2018, in memory of Michelle Lewis. Whereas the people of Carrollton are shocked and grief-stricken by the death of Michelle Lewis on October 16th, 2018, an honored and respected citizen of our community for many years, and whereas Michelle Lewis served our community in many capacities too numerous to mention herein, but the most prominent being that she served our community as a University of Georgia agent, extension agent, since 2008. And whereas Michelle Lewis displayed exemplary dedication to the best interests of our schools and our children by working for the betterment of our community in the success center at Carrollton Elementary. It's a remedial learning program for students. And whereas her positive influence reached far beyond her service to her family, the children who participated in her programs, her family, her friends, her church, her career, and her community activities. And whereas she earned the respect, admiration, and highest regards of those with whom she came in contact, and therefore, our community has sustained a great loss in her death. And whereas we mourn the loss of Michelle Lewis and extend to her family expressions of sincere regret and sympathy, and offer the hope that they will be consoled by the memories of her extraordinary life and achievements. Now therefore, be it resolved that the memorial be made a part of the official records of the city of Carrollton, and that an official copy of expression of our sympathy be delivered to her family. Signed, Walt Hollinsworth and Gerald Byrd. Thank you, everybody. And I'm not sure if we have any members of her family here, but I know Robin Collins is here in support of her. And if anybody else is here in support of Michelle, Deidre, if y'all want to come up and get a picture with us in memory of Michelle, y'all good with that? And she may have some other people she worked with here as well tonight.
Item number three on our agenda is the rezoning of 416 Rome Street. Ms. Studdard?
The third item on your agenda is a rezoning request from C1, Central Business District, to a residential plan development. The Planning Commission reviewed this request in November, and they recommend a unanimous approval with one commissioner abstaining with the following recommendations. The project is limited to no more than 12 dwelling units. The building design is to match adjacent residential properties in terms of materials of construction, building scale, building profiles, garage placement, and landscaping. The final site plan will be contingent on the hydrology study. Residential plan development is required to have 40% lot coverage in residential use, 15% lot coverage in open space, and 5% lot coverage in recreation. Due to the proximity of this project to the Neva Omens and Library downtown Carrollton and the Carrollton Green Belt, we recommend that that 5% recreation space be waived. Up to 25% of the required common space may be used for stormwater management as well. The residents at the corner of Rome Street and West Rees Street must utilize architectural details that give double street frontage curb appeal, such as a wraparound porch, and will be flexible with that in the design review. Any single-family residence of a bunnig Rome Street or West Rees Street must have their primary orientation towards the street and utilize rear entrance garages. Every attempt to retain existing tree canopy where possible should be made. And then the landscaping requirements for the R10 zoning districts, district will apply to this development since the plan development. I would like to make one note about condition number six, and then there's also a reference to it regarding garages. When they presented this plan to the Planning Commission in November, they were proposing to do some sort of carport or parking pad. Our concern was that it be rear-loaded, and they have met that with the proposed design plan. However, when the Planning Commission made the recommendation, they made it per staff recommendations, which included that garage provision. I would ask tonight that you would consider allowing them to have flexibility as to whether or not they do a garage and/or a carport, as long as it's rear-loaded. And the applicant is here, if you have any questions.
Good evening. I'm Richard Demet. This is Josh Chapman, and our third partner is Ben Garrett, who could not be here this evening. But I'm going to, I'm not going to go over any great detail here unless any of you would like for me to. You're familiar with the project, I think. You're familiar with the three partners that are involved in this. We did receive a unanimous recommendation of approval from the planning and zoning. And with that, I'll just ask you if any of you have any questions. Otherwise, I'll sit down and we'll go from there.
I'm going to ask a couple. What size bedroom and square footage are these buildings going to be?
1,600 to 1,800 square feet. And each house, every house, will be a two-story house, relatively thin in profile, and with three bedrooms, two and a half baths. And with a variety of styles and appearances. But the floor plans will generally be two or three different types of floor plans.
And the plan is also to really kind of take the architectural detail of the community, which is the, you know, early 1900s, bungalow craftsman style, and really try to make this project fit into what's currently there today.
And if there's no holdups, when do you think you might be finished with it? And was it, what's the timeline and everything? Are you going to put one house up?
Sure. So, the initial plan would be to start basically immediately. We've got to obviously get some plans approved. We've got to finalize our architectural design and get that, you know, approved by the city. But the intent would be...
Stormwater.
Stormwater as well. But the intent would be to start as soon as we can start. Now, our projection is to phase the project in as opposed to build 12 houses at one time. I think that's...
Presale and try to pre...
We're going to try to.
Yes.
Try to pre-sell as many as we can. If we can pre-sell 12, we'll build 12. But we think it's more economically responsible, particularly given the housing market over the last 10 years, that we take a slow, methodical process to it. My current anticipation is 18 months. All things going well, but I don't have a crystal ball.
So, people are going to park in the backs of these houses, or is it that type of community? Or front and back?
Yes, yes. Which was an important feature to us. We wanted to basically hide the parking as much as possible.
We're not going to have any street parking in any of this.
Actually...
There are four units on Rees that would have a parallel drive-up parking, but those are the only four. The other, and each home has a provision for two vehicles. One vehicle would be parked in the rear, one in the front on Rees.
On those, on only those four? The rest of them will have two in the rear.
You have a price point on all of it? I'm not bearing any...
Upper 200s.
Yeah, upper 200s, but staying below the 300 thousand.
You have a donation program?
Certainly.
And this just reminds me of how much times have changed, you know, in our lifetime, because I remember when one house used to sit on that lot. You remember that? Can y'all remember that?
That's before my time, I think. Well, I haven't found it.
The haunted house, Matt?
Yeah.
One little light was always on upstairs, and we just wondered, who lives in that house? Big old Victorian mansion.
Yeah.
It's crazy. Now, what, 12 houses will take the place of that one house?
Yeah.
Is that building next to it, is it still, it seemed like I walked my dog by it, still being used, the old Bell South or Southern Bell?
Yes, apparently it is some sort of operation center, I'm not really quite sure. It is AT&amp;T.
Southern Bell.
It's AT&amp;T.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think it's actually the probation office.
Oh, that's what I saw.
Well, that's the other side.
Mm-hmm. Well, it's next to it, though. Yeah, yeah. So, are we going to do any infrastructural changes to that street? Because one thing that I think added to the trauma when I was a kid was the fact that there were overhanging trees on Rees Street. But I know those trees may be to the point now where they've spent their lives. Are we going to do anything to widen that street? Are we going to leave it as is, Tim? Because it's very, very narrow. It's almost now down to one lane because the roots have taken over.
They're going to need a traffic analysis and will determine if it needs to be a two-way street or a single, or a one-way street, and then they'll have to modify the street accordingly. Similarly, with stormwater, they got to run their hydrology and determine what needs to be done. There's, I think, a 54-inch arch pipe that goes through the, not on the property, but in that general area out in the back to the west, and they'll have to tie to that. They'll need detention, and they know that. We've discussed it with them at length, so they're prepared for that.
Okay. When that open, I'm sorry.
I'd love to see the density come downtown. Part of our master plan, having dense residential in that sort of vicinity. And I'd love to see the look of the project, including the, I typically wouldn't be an on-street parking sort of person, but I do know we do have traffic speed issues, and one thing that is helpful is actually having on-street parking in residential areas. It helps slow, naturally slow down traffic. So, having that as an included aspect could be very helpful moving forward. My one thing, which I think has been discussed before, was just trying to maintain as many of the trees as possible that are there and then just planting new ones. Cause I do know some of their, some of them will have to be removed, but being able to try to maintain some of that canopy will be very helpful, but.
We're definitely gonna do all we can. There, there are a lot of older trees there which, which we do think are very valuable, but also have outlived some of their lifespan as well. But absolutely committed to, to any kind of replanning plan that, I mean, we, we want it to be green. We want it to be-
As you see from that diagram.
You know, mature and green and that sort of thing. I think it just benefits the, the residential area as much as it does the city.
This may be some for sneaky questions, but is there like an HOA here and are there common areas? I see where it says extra space or something like that. Open space.
There, there will be.
There will be.
There will need to be an HOA per, per the particular type of zoning that we're doing as I understand it from Erica. I mean, at this, there is a certain percentage of common space which is required and so that in turn will require an HOA of some sort. And I think primarily it would be the, the parking in the drive area. That'll be a portion of that and maybe some other areas as well. Do you remember, Josh?
Not too late. I know the intent is to have an HOA just to manage the whole property, make sure it maintains its look and feel properly. And that would be of the utmost importance. There is some common space along the drives. There's obviously not a lot, but again, going back to the city recommendation that because we're in such close proximity to parks, libraries, things of that nature, that, that we get to, to piggyback on that a little bit and just try to make this a part of that downtown.
It's a nice area.
I've got one more question for Erica. Can you reiterate the staff recommendations and what occurred in the Planning Commission? What was approved or what was, just reiterate that part.
Libby, can you pull that, pull that up again? It's quite lengthy, but it's on your green sheets and your packets. And the only, like I said, the only thing that was really something worth noting beyond these eight recommendations is that, that reference to garages. They were very clear with the Planning Commission that they intended to do some sort of parking pads in the rear or carports. I don't think that's been determined quite yet. I think they're still looking at some of the design stuff for the, for the homes. And so, do you want me to go through each of these eight or do you want?
I sit here and I remember your highlights, so I'm good.
Right, yes, yes. The garages were the only thing on there that, that I would just ask for your consideration on behalf of the developer. I mean, we've, they've been very upfront about that.
Thank you very much. Does anybody like to voice their opinion against this rezoning?
My name is John Cross. I live at 114 Plantation, Walt Carrollton, Georgia. I'm not technically against the plan. We need that, but on-street parking, if you go allow kids in this neighborhood, on-street parking, Rees Street's already very short, very narrow. And if kid, you're, understand you go waive their playground right, they're gonna have nowhere to go but the street to play, basically is what it sounds like. So, without the playground place and with the street being so narrow and allowing on-street parking, if there are any kids there, it's just very, very dangerous. So, I'd like to, for you to give that real consideration when you're thinking. That's the only thing I've comment. Thank you.
Like to readdress?
Yes, let me just, and I, I understand that concern. First of all, I think there are only, is it four? Four houses, maybe? Four houses that, that will have a, a, a parallel parking spot in front of them. One parallel parking. So, there are only four. They are on Rees Street, but, but those are going to be on our property, not in the existing street. So, they're, you know, we're coming toward us and, and so the street will remain the same.
Technically, it is, it is on the street per se, but it is on our property. We're not using part of Rees Street as that parking area.
Correct.
I got you.
So, we try to pull it back off and push the houses back to, to try to deal with that. We know Rees Street is a-
It, it, it is certainly narrow. We-
We've got Safari Park just down the road, right next, not, is Safari Park? Yeah, Safari Park, right down the road from there.
It's about a block.
Perfect, perfect. For kids playing, they've got a good, easy access to a playground.
Right, and you've got sidewalks actually, once you get off of, of Rees itself. I mean, if you came off the Rome side, you've got sidewalk all the way there in, in all directions, so.
You've got it on your property as well, on the north side of the property?
Yeah, it's on the, it's on the front side and on our, our, there's a walk street side. Now, once you get the backside of Rees, there isn't, there isn't currently sidewalk there. But then, once you get to Cliff Street, there's sidewalk all the way up to Safari Park and the library. And then, of course, off of Rome, there's sidewalk all the way up.
Any more questions? Hearing none, I assume y'all are ready to decide. Can I get a motion to approve with the staff recommendations?
So moved.
I have a motion, I have a second.
Can I pause with, does that include with the change about garages that Erica mentioned?
All the staff recommendations.
I, I think the motion would be if you're inclined to do what staff recommended would be to accept the recommendation of the Planning Commission, but with the, with the change to allow garages or carports so long as they're rear-loaded.
Thank you, Chuck. That's why we pay you big money. Um, go, so you want with, I'm gonna just-
Well, one other piece of that was the waiving of the 5% coverage for recreation just due to the fact that it is in close proximity to the downtown?
It's already in the Planning Commission recommendation.
Yeah, on the planning, so we're gonna, Gerald, you wanna withdraw your motion?
I withdraw my motion at this time.
Thanks, sir. So-
And I'm gonna be honest with you, I'm gonna have somebody else to, to make that motion. I would not-
I think the motion is the motion to accept the Planning Commission's recommendation, except that the applicant can utilize garages or carports so long as they're rear-loaded.
Correct. As long as they're rear-loaded.
Rear-loaded.
Okay, I'm gonna attempt to do this. Oh, Lord. I may not be the one to try to regurgitate this, but I move we approve this agenda item with the staff recommendations concerning garages or parking pads be rear-loading. Did I get that right? With no sleep. Woo-hoo. Thank you.
Thanks to y'all.
I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor? Please raise your hand. Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Good job, Joe.
Erica, special use permit.
Yes, the next item on your agenda is a special use permit at 323 and 327 Foster Street. Many of you may be, may be aware, several, I guess it's been probably a little over a year ago, Campus Walk came in and applied for a multifamily redevelopment overlay application at Foster Street to basically tear down-
Erica, Erica. If I can interrupt you, I have a client attorney relationship with the applicant, so I'm gonna actually step out and let the mayor pro tem get me. So, I'm gonna recuse myself, obviously.
I'm sorry, when you said let the mayor pro tem, I was yawning.
I didn't hear that part.
Oh, okay, good. All right, good. I'll come back and get you.
Um, the, the multifamily redevelopment overlay was approved by this council. At the time, there were two lots that had single-family residences on them that were zoned C2 and the developer could not get basically a contract to purchase those two lots. The property's in the transit, in transition of being sold again and then the, the new developer has approached the property owner about purchasing those two lots. Those two lots are 323 and 327 Foster Street. The Planning Commission reviewed a special use request by the applicant to approve basically a special use to allow for multifamily in C2 because that's what those lots were zoned on behalf of, on behalf of the property owner Dexter Hardy, so that these two lots can be included in the proposed development. The Planning Commission reviewed this request in November and they made a motion to approve this request five to zero. You can see the, the lots there on the location map on your screens. And the developer is here if you have any questions. These two lots are gonna be used for, primarily for access into the new development.
Erica, this does go back to the old Campus Walk, doesn't it?
Uh, yes, it's, it's basically part of that, that whole development, but they were able to pick up those last two lots, those two missing teeth per se.
Someone here like to speak on behalf?
Good evening. I'm David McKenna with Mallory and Evans Development. We are under contract to purchase the cap, Campus Walk apartment community.
Sir, can you pull the microphone? Yeah.
We are under contract to purchase the Campus Walk apartment community. It's our intention to demolish it and build new. And we wanted to acquire these two pieces along Foster Street just to make a better land assemblage, to help us plan better. And that's all this is about. There's owned commercial, multifamily isn't allowed on commercial unless you have a special use permit. So, the purpose of this thing is just to make that, those two little lots use-compatible with the rest of the property that we're gonna be redeveloping.
You want to have any questions?
With the overlay district and these two pieces, these two lots, what would be the tot, total density of this development? That is student housing?
Yes.
In the, in this missing tooth, you've demolished the houses there now, right? I've noticed just driving through there.
Yes.
They're gone.
That was my phrase, missing tooth.
Yeah, redone them. They have been remodeled and just flattened them.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks, sir. Anybody here to speak against this request? No one standing. Anybody got any more questions?
You know what I wish? I mean, I'm just a dreamer up here, I guess, but I wish there was a way we could require in the future moving forward, maybe we need to investigate this, concessions from anybody who builds within, you know, the poorest section of town, because there's no sidewalks over there. And it'd be neat if we could tie some sidewalks into this.
In the new development, they'll be required to put sidewalks on, on any street front of property.
I mean, for the people who live around that neighborhood. You know, we're building college communities around their homes and wouldn't it be neat to give back to them?
I think it would probably kill the development, but we can work those as in city projects. I mean, it, it wouldn't be this year, but we could certainly do that.
Okay, good. Maybe on one side of that street we could, because I know the, the street that ties into that street has sidewalks, but Foster itself has no pedestrian, uh, it's, it's impassable for pedestrians and people fly up and down that road.
We, we make them install sidewalk along their property and but we would, we would just, you're right, yes, sir. We, we can plan city projects to tie that together.
I'm just playing Robin Hood, I'm sorry, but thank y'all.
Any more questions? I'd like to make a motion we approve as per the planning zoning board. Have a second. All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries. Thank you very much, gentlemen. Somebody won't get me. Erica, resolution 21 dash 218.
Resolution dash 21 dash 21A regards accessory dwelling units in additional zoning districts, specifically in residential, single-family residential zoning districts. The Planning Commission reviewed this resol, resolution in November, actually in October and in November, and in November they recommended denial to the mayor and city council with a vote of five to one. I can go through this resolution in detail if you have questions or if you do not. I'm here, I'm available.
I know I was reached out to by a few people in my ward and just in the area that felt that some of the design standards and building standards for these buildings weren't quite up to where they'd like to see it. I think what the main concern is people just popping up a small little shop out back and making it into a rentable unit or something of that nature. So, what I'd like to do is see if there is a, what better building standards were in other communities we, we could pull from in terms of those to make sure that whatever building does get put back there is of high quality and really increases the value of the home, increases the value of the homes in the area rather than the other way around. Cause I know we have seen, there are some garage units that are grandfathered in and what I'd like to not see is housing that isn't up to snuff pop up in, in residential areas and not be of that nature, so.
And Erica, you may have done it, but could you remind us of what that, oh, accessory dwellings, those, those little storage units for-
In-law suites.
Yeah.
Correct. So, they're basically accessory residential units and what this ordinance was proposing was to allow them in R20 and R15 in addition to ER1 and ER3 where they're, where they're currently allowed. It also was to open up a little flexibility on how, on who could live there. In other words, they could be rentals, rental units where in ER1 and ER3, they basically couldn't be held out for rent, so.
That's like these little, the ones that are sold down, down 27 for like three or $4,000, is that what we're talking about?
No, 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 no. These would be, you know, there are some in, in the, in the city that are grandfathered in, but these would just be either like an apartment and a garage, like an overhead garage apartment or something like that. Or it could be just a, you know, just a unit in the back.
People are building those now to put behind their home? I know that.
You think like, like, um, families that have in-laws or people that are, what is it, empty nesters that are looking to relocate into downtown area, but don't have either the finances to be able to purchase a house that's in walking distance to amenities? Or young professionals just wanting a smaller place, not wanting to live in an apartment?
It's like a carriage house out back or something like that. Yeah, I know there's a lot of them around here, older ones, but I didn't know people were building new ones, but, okay. I should've known that, so.
I'd like to make a motion to table this so we can get more staff recommendations on how to increase the building standards.
I have a motion on the floor to table. Do I have a second? I have a second. Any more discussion? Hearing none, I assume you're ready to vote. All in favor of tabling this motion until a later date? Please raise your hand. Motion's table. West Metro Regional Drug Task Force, Tim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do not need a vote on this item. I just need to make you aware that the West Metro Regional Drug Enforcement Office operates on the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Grant. We get a grant of $353,413 or the task force does. There has to be a host entity. The city of Carrollton is the host entity for that grant. There's no action you have to take, but I'm required to read this into the minutes. So, just making you aware of that, that we are the host city for that grant. You probably know the, you know, office is right across Center Street here and it involves a number, how many different entities, Joel, is, are involved in the task? Very effective group, just another example of great cooperation between cities and counties in this area and they, they get a lot done. It's an amazing organization. So, anyway, I just needed to read that into the minutes and make you aware of this grant. Next item is, several weeks ago, you gentlemen had requested that we do a, in a quarterly work session. Last month, we handed out what we proposed as that schedule. If you have had time to look at that, I would ask you to approve this. If you don't feel like you've had time, you can wait till the January meeting to approve it. But, uh, the, it basically is, for three of the meetings next year, we would propose they be on a Thursday evening, Thursday, January 17th, Thursday, July 18th and Thursday, October 18th. We would suggest that one of the work sessions, the one in April, be your budget retreat and that would be on a Saturday, April 13th and the location undetermined. So, that's our recommendation and if you're comfortable voting on that tonight, we would ask you to do that. It's all spelled out in this memo.
Is it the July meeting that is the budget council meeting? Or we'd vote for the proposed budget, is that correct? July?
It is the first, it'll be the first Monday- It is the first, it'll be the first Monday of July after the 4th of July. It's when you would vote on the actual budget, yes.
Make a motion we accept. Have a second? Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries. Thank you, sir. One more, Tim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The final item is, oh, there are four members of the Planning and Zoning Commission whose terms expire December 31st. They would all like to be reappointed. They are Jason Smith, who is the chair, Sandra Hausen, John Jackson, and Jay Nix. They're all very active members and have done a great job, and we recommend that you reappoint all four of these people.
I'm sorry, I'm trying to get to the page. I apologize. Man, okay, yes, thank you.
Hearing none, I will make a motion we approve. Have a second?
Sorry, this re, to reinstate the same one.
Reinstate.
Yes.
Motion and a second. All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Is there any more business come before this body? Hearing none, adjourn.